Where we live, at least get somebody to look at it. Mr. Catania could come out and look at it. I had turned it into a maintenance building. And one of their maintenance people came out and looked at it and said, you know, that Mr. Catania would have to look at it, I guess, to take a look. But it's been going on for years. And like I said, Carmen says it actually built this walkway, not a walkway, but a place where it could drain down to the corner. It's a Sixth Avenue. And there's probably got to be, there's a pipe where it goes under the ground. And but it'll fill up the water this high. Mr. Bunny's house, he could tell you. And I'm just wondering if this, if he could look at it and determine if we need to get a storm sewer down there, Shannon.
Yeah. You're totally should best rather than contact the commissioner.
Right.
To start, and Shannon will take control direct the manager and the engineer and go over and take a look at it.
Yeah.
We support each other, so we're.
Well, that that would be great. I mean, I appreciate it. And like I said, this is all started long before, you know, Shannon took over. I think that. And but it's just that, you know, I'm tired of my.
I don't see Mike Shannon. He hates me, Shannon. This stuff was like this before I got here.
I'm just tired of my backyard looking like Ridley Lake out there. You know, we're the four people that get it really bad. We're like at the end of this, where it goes underground. And like I said, there's got to be a 10-inch line there. Maybe years ago, it tied in. Like I said, I believe, you know, I grew up in that house. And like I said, there used to be a creek back there on Sixth Avenue behind there. And I think that's where the water drained to. And now, the neighbor behind us was nice and they had a grate put in. They didn't have it put in. There was a grate with a pipe running out. But how far the pipe ran down, if it ran 20-foot, I don't know. But if Mr. Catania could look at it and Shannon, we would really appreciate it. And is there intention of building more storm sewers?
Recently, we have a correct. I mean, we have issues all throughout the township. So we, you know, we have nine wards we've tried to, you know, get them.
Yeah.
The worst projects.
I think that's the second ward where it got, you know, work time. Is that correct?
Second, we've done work in everything.
Oh, oh, well, over the town.
Yeah, we spread it out. That's why money goes pretty quick. But let's look at it. We'll see what we can do.
Well, I'd really appreciate it. And, you know, thank you for your time.
What's your exact address, sir?
525 Ridley Avenue.
That's your backyard.
It's, well, there's about four of us at least, maybe four or five people.
529.
527 Ridley Avenue.
Okay.
And also 523. What's that, Bob?
Guys home going today?
Yes. I'm retired. I'm a long time.
I thought you were only 50 years old.
I know, come on. I'm older than that. But like I said, anything, if you could look at it and hopefully come up with a plan, it would make a, you know, I'm tired of my grandkids wanting to swim out there when they're, when they're young, you know, so. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public? There's the fourth house.
Yes.
I had figured that. When all three of you turned around and waved.
You have a slimy.
523.
523.
523, yeah.
The smartest guy in Markley, you know, sometime.
Oh, Bob, will you contact this one? Mr. Shannon?
Shannon will or catch your managers.
Okay, thank you very much.
They'll probably book some out. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, manager's report, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Received a block party request for Mildred Avenue for July 9, 2022. I'd like to table that action until I meet with the organizers. We also received a special events permit request for 1314 Park Lane Road. Have a mobile escape room at the property on June 26. A motion to approve will be in order, subject to working out the details of the parking with the homeowner.
Awesome.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who favor sing five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Our update this month for our ARPA funding. Last month, we talked about the stormwater projects that, and sewer projects we were doing. The commissioners met. And this month, the commissioners have voted to give each of our volunteer fire companies $50,000 each from the ARPA funding. So all six of them will be receiving $50,000 to use to, for equipment and what they need.
Very happy.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, recycling report? Is that Shannon?
Thank you. Trash collected in April was 1,263.70 tons. For second collect in April was 173.05 tons. We collected three TVs and monitors in April. For television monitor recycling program, more information, visit the ALBA or the township website at www.ridleytownship.org.
Thank you. Control room report?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you. Services report. Neil, Mr. President of the Fire. Engineer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a fine certificate for consideration. Rated communication service, the 2022 police radio maintenance contract, $3,229.01. ATU services, the 2022 storm and sanitary sewer contract, $13,174.37. End avenues of construction, the Penn West Storm Improvement, $129,917.23. End avenues of construction, greenhouse drive sanitary sewer project, $49,329.46. Mobile dredging and video plating incorporated, the Braxton Road sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, $77,549.40. And then second payment for $33,980.40. We have three projects for traffic planning and design. Keydrum and Franklin avenues, $8,906.25. McDay Boulevard improvements, $2,098.75. And the Greenlight Go Grant for $7,199.57. And finally, McMahon Associates for the Arley Grant, $202.50.
I'll make a motion to approve the certificates as written.
I'll second. Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have one escrow approval for consideration. We have a letter from Dave Damon for La Coco at Young's Avenue for $55,000.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Tabulations of bids, Mullenburg Avenue colored replaced and rebid. This is the second time we bid this project. We actually reduced the scope and the cost went up. We only had one bid. I'm going to recommend we just table, reject that bid, table this project, and we'll have to consider it when construction costs are more reasonable. FEMA resolution, we may need the official action on that. Sorry.
To reject that. Motion, motion. Dave, what? Second, made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
With FEMA resolution grant agreement, when we're dealing with FEMA and FEMA on the acquisition of a seller property that are flooded, it appears that township may be eligible for reimbursement of some flood remediation work or, I guess, emergency service that were provided during the August storm, hurricane and storm. So we need a resolution, authorization of resolution to make those applications.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have the county TCDI grant resolutions, transportation and community development initiative. The county planning department is planning to put an application into Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to do a study on Route 291. Need a resolution to approve that.
I'll make it.
I'll second. Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Pendot Projects, McDay Boulevard. This is the I-476 interstate project we waited for for a long time. That project was bid, contract was awarded to Alan Myers. We had a free construction meeting about two weeks ago. Still not close to being started, but we're one step closer to actually happening. So once Myers will provide a schedule to us, then we'll be able to provide further information. Pendot has two paving projects. The first one is Morton Avenue from the railroad down to the Acme, all the way down to Keydrum. Now it makes the entire length of Morton Avenue. That's also Alan Myers, waiting for a schedule from them. And then they just awarded a contract to Highway Materials for paving Sellers Avenue from Fairmount to Chester Pike. And we'll wait for a schedule from them. And then finally, a Penn West project status. That project is finally winding down. They're working up on the restoration on Winona Avenue. And then they're on Armstrong and Wendy. And that'll be the final for that. That's all I have.
Great. Well, thank you. Highway sanitation permit report, Mr. Craig.
I'd like to remind the residents that there is no trash collection this coming Monday, the 30th of May, in observation of Memorial Day. Also, the county will hold its second hazardous waste collection event. And it will take place Saturday, June 11, at Rose Tree Park from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Registration is required at Delcohhw.everbright.com.
Ron Orange, committee report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We're deferred to first slide to the county manager, Joe Ryan.
We need a motion for final adoption. First off, we ordered in 2061, the police pension amendment. As resulted, negotiations with the police department for their contract this year, negotiated that they'll be able to receive the drop program. And that's a deferred pension plan. So that's going to be a change to the police pension amendment. Need a motion on it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second ordinance is, ordinance 2062, it's the police service connected disability. Also, as part of negotiations, there were changes made to the service connected disability. Therefore, we need a motion to change that ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next, we need a resolution. Third item during the contract negotiations was as part of the Officers 457 program, which is a deferred compensation program that they can contribute to themselves. Township has agreed to offer a Roth option in that program. So it asks for a resolution. I needed to add that to the deferral program.
I'll make a motion for resolution.
I'll second. Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next ordinance is ordinance number 2063. This is for the Portoff Law Associates Limited to collect unpaid township real estate taxes and sewer rubbish fees. These are taxes and fees that have not been paid and have been outstanding. This is a law firm that specializes in those collections. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The last is a resolution for third-party collection for delinquent taxes. This is a resolution allowing Portoff to collect our unpaid taxes for detention.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to Mr. Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Fegoli.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we're here tonight for the final adoption of ordinance 2060, dealing with medical marijuana dispensary slash grower processor facilities. We had a public hearing last Thursday concerning this ordinance. The ordinance was advertised for tonight's hearing. The ordinance deals with the amendment of the Ridley Township zoning ordinance to establish the process and standards, the establishment operations of medical marijuana facilities pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Act 16. To establish definitions for medical marijuana dispensary use and medical marijuana grower processor use, and to further provide regulations for such uses for the protection of public health, safety, and general welfare. Some of the requirements that are in here for medical marijuana dispensaries, that they cannot be located within 1,000 feet of any institution, such as a private or public or appropriate schools or daycare centers. There's also regulations concerning permitted hours of use. They're also restricted with respect to entrances for medical marijuana distribution. Dispensary made dispenses only medical marijuana to certified patients and caregivers. With respect, and they are regulated to the shopping district in the township. With respect to the medical marijuana grower processor use, that is restricted to the industrial section of the township. And that's also, they're limited to 1,000 feet from any public, private, or appropriate schools and daycare, daycare centers. There's also restrictions on what, how they have to dispose of any remnants of byproducts in secured fashion. They also have to have controlling emissions, dust, or fumes, or vapors that may be released into the environment. Mr. President.
Just so we're clear, this is a, let's say, legalized in the state. The township has to have a place for, you cannot say you cannot have, you have to have a zoning area that you allow this particular use or any particular use. You have to allow certain zoning parcel of your township. We chose a shopping center district for the retail end of it and the industrial part for the, which is limited to where they, where they can go in the township. Basically, the shopping center would be at Home Depot and that. And another part would be probably over by 291, 291.
It's also restricted by a pension department.
Yeah.
There's state regulations.
They don't care about Ridley Township. And they're not going to care about people.
I just want everybody to know, there's also other restrictions.
Yeah. Yes. Want people to know that we're not, we're not, we're not welcoming this into the township. And we're, you know, I don't know, let's put it wherever we want. We make, put as much restriction on these as we possibly can. Right?
So we need a motion.
So we need a motion to approve.
Make a motion over.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Sirthing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to amend code section 202-15 to read no recreational or utility trailers. Where recreational vehicles shall be parked in a comic or shared driveway, only permitted in private driveways.
So I think we got to do that next month. We're going to have to work up some kind of amendment to the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
So we need a motion to work on that. Attempt to adopt that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to attempt to adopt. Code 202-50.
And I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recreation Committee report, Mr. Madigan.
Thank you, Mr. President. All five summer playground camps are now completely full. This is still, there's still availability in our summer sports camps. Available this summer are the following camps, girls and boys, lacrosse, field hockey, tennis, and softball. An online registration link can be found on our website at www.ridleytownship.org under Parks and Recreation. We also have a availability in our summer craft class. Discounted tickets to Morey Pier Adventure Aquarium, Cadobals, and Splash Zone are now available. Additional tickets will be available shortly. Tickets can be purchased Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 4:00. We accept cash payment for those tickets. No change will be made at that window. Thank you. Of exact change.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee report, before we start, I, my report, I'd like to take, have a moment of silence for the kids who, teachers who were killed in the tragic shooting in Texas. So we could take a moment of silence. May I? Thank you. On behalf of the board of commissioners, like we stand our deepest sympathy to the family of Ed, Ed Howie. Ed retired a few years back after working as a mechanic at a public works garage for about 10 years. Ed was quiet and a hardworking guy. We'll keep him and his family in prayers. And of course, Eddie, the son of our police. And our police department does a great job and is just as vocal as his dad. Wasn't saying much, but they work hard. So our condolences, glad. I also had to congratulate Chad Kennedy on receiving the Ann Walonsky Memorial Scholarship at Ridley High School. Ann Walonsky was our township manager for almost 50 years. The board established this scholarship back in 2011, a year after Ann passed away. The board is a high school senior who will pursue, pursue a degree in business or public administration at a four-year university. Congratulations to Chad. We have communication from John Houdima from Holmes Fire Company. I'm going to get that printed over to Mr. Ryan.
This is from John Houdima, who's the chief of the Holmes Fire Company. He wrote the commissioners a letter saying that he would like to keep us informed about an incident which occurred on May 6, 2022, in the home section of Ridley Township. At 5:57 AM, the company was dispatched to 2021 Academy Avenue for a building fire investigation. Upon arrival on the scene, Sergeant Kinsel from the police department was carrying an oil-filled electric heater out of the home. He stated the plug in the heater had burned off, that the paneling was burnt, but believed that there was no active fire. As firemen entered the home, they saw a burn-off crime was still in the mall outlet, and that the paneling had been burnt around the outlet. When the officer, when the fire company arrived, the wall was checked with a thermal imaging cam, camera for elevated heat signatures. The scan of the wall revealed the surface of the paneling was warm, but did not indicate that elevated temperatures existed within the wall. The crew attempted de-energize the electrical circuit at the panel, but was unable to do so. Complicating the situation was that the resident of the home was in a hospital bed, and it appeared that medical equipment was running and that electricity was needed. The fire company was fearful that if they shut down a vital piece of life-saving equipment by flipping every breaker in an effort to locate the affected wall outlet, this could cause harm to the resident. The urgency of the situation was explained to the nursing staff that was, was there, and it was strongly suggested to have an electrician come and secure the power and change out the electrical device. The nurse attempted to notify family members, but was unable to. Fearful the hazards still existed, Chief Houdima reached out to Jim Mitchell, owner of Mitch Electric, a local electrical company, to see if he could offer assistance. After hearing back from the family member, Chief Houdima contacted Jim, and he immediately responded along with his son, Tom. They were able to isolate the circuit, check the wiring for damages, and replace the device without having to interrupt the power to the needed, needed equipment. All this was done by Jim without charging the family any charges. As he said, it was the right thing to do, considering the circumstances. Chief Houdima feels that the task officials and the residents should be aware of the kind of thoughtful good deed that one of our own residents did or another resident in our community. Is that right?
Very nice.
Absolutely.
And again, I was in the middle of the night. Didn't connect.
Awesome. Have you charged for upstairs?
Thank you. Our Public Safety Committee report for the month of April, our police handle 970 calls. Breakdowns as follows, Crumlin 96, Folsom 251, Holmes 101, Melma Park 52, Morton 34, Ridley Park 120, Sea King 61, Swarthmore 36, and Woodland 219. All updates from the police department. On April 26, Officer Wright learned of shots fired in Golden Borough of Eddie Stone. Wright observed the subject fitting. The description of the actor involved headed towards Chester Pike, towards Fairview Road. A foot pursuit ensued as the subject failed to comply with the police. The defendant was apprehended in a short distance away after he fought with police. He was found to be in possession of a handgun, which police were able to seize. Remember now who you're chasing down. But great job by Officer Wright. On May 2, Officer Judge was on routine patrol in the Ridley Park section of the township when he observed a vehicle parked at the air pump in the Royal Farms. The two adult occupants were passed out at the time. Their work of mouth was Judge, who ensured that medical attention was not needed. The subject was found to be under the influence, influence, and in possession of methamphetamines, controlled prescription medications, marijuana, and paraphernalia. Arrests were made and contraband removed from the streets. Sergeant McDevitt was dispatched to the Ridley area Little League fields, where he learned three juveniles absconding with $800 worth of equipment from the shed. Through his investigation and assistance from the schools, McDevitt was able to identify all three subjects and recover all the stolen items. On May 14, Officer Judge, along with his canine partner, Zork, assisted Brookhaven Borough in tracking suspects following a theft at the Lowe's in Brookhaven. Officer Zork had followed a scent that led them 20 yards into the woods, where a suspect was taken into custody. So even our dogs have done a good job. I want to congratulate our township manager, Joe Ryan, who recently completed a 150-mile relay-style law enforcement memorial run from the Navy Yard in Philadelphia to the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC. Joe ran 12 miles each day over a three-day period and was the oldest active runner. The oldest, the oldest, the oldest active runner this year.
Is that saying he's the oldest?
Yeah. The run itself during the National Police Week to honor the family members and survivors of officers killed in the line of duty. This was Joe's 16th year in participating. So Joe, congratulations. I don't know how he did it. 12 miles each day, then drank 12 glasses of vodka at night. I don't know how he does it.
He's fueled up.
Yeah, he was fueled up when I talked to him. I don't know.
That got me through the final two days.
I stuck with him for the first eight miles. And now it's Joe, carry.
Yeah, but then your car broke down. And now it's.
All right, all right. Let's go move on here. Healthcare Department, Mr. Sirthing.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of April, we had 247 permits issued, 34 contractors registered, 60 certificates of occupancy issued, 270 rental inspections, and 13 health inspections. That's all I have.
Thank you. Community Committee report, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Received a request for an extension act on the final land development application of Canyon Brothers Inc. at 2023 East McDay Boulevard until July 28, 2022. This is for the development of the Popeyes Restaurant at this location. I'd like to make the motion to approve this extension request.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item, we also received an extension request for McDay Bullens LLC for redevelopment of the Wawa at 1920 West McDay Boulevard in Woodland. This was, this was for a six-month extension, and I'd like to make the motion to approve this request.
I'll second. Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All who are favored signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. President.
My just said, Canyon Brothers did get rid of the rock pile that was there and cleaning up the corner. It'd been on top, and then to get it done, so they probably got the crusher in there. All the bricks and rocks were crushed and was used to fill the hole that was created when they knocked the building again. So.
I thought you were going to say McDay, you made this land right in the corner. It doesn't look good.
Yeah. That's it, Mr. President.
Library and Research Center Committee report, Mr. Cummins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nearly 3,800 residents visited the library in April and checked out more than 12,500 books and other items per program attended, which was nearly 2,000. On Monday, the library board voted to extend the hours the library is open beginning June sixth. The new hours are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, from ten in the morning till eight PM. Thursday, Friday, ten to five, Saturday, nine to four. Summer Quest, the summer reading program for children of all ages begins June thirteenth with fun and educational scheduling events to keep children engaged and reading during the summer. Some Highlights, children in grade K to five can learn about sea creatures with the Center for Aquatic Sciences on June twenty-second. Children three and older are invited to a kickoff party with the Little Army. There will be stories, songs, and games on June thirteenth. Families of babies aged zero to three will not want to miss baby prom on June twenty-fifth. This early literacy event will include stories, songs, and games. For more information or to register, visit the website, www.ridleytownship.org.
Thank you. Finance Committee report, Mr. Marsack.
Thank you, Mr. President. All commissioners received a list of this council. I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to controllers to review on approval.
I'll second.
Motion made second. Any questions on the motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We have any other new business on this side?
I have an update for the flooding demo. On Magnus and Riley, we got a hold of FEMA and the buyout program. We won't hear anything from them till early fall.
That's your update, too?
Yeah.
You're not going to hear anything?
Another turn.
Everyone have a happy Memorial Day. Great job, Jim Mitchell and Tommy.
All good.
Yeah, I just want to thank the commissioners who were able to attend the Ridley Area Little League parade. And a special thanks to the board at Ridley Area Little League, all the volunteers down there and the parents. For everybody that was there, it was a very successful day. They've, they've done a fabulous job over the last several years. And just thank them for everything they're doing. That's it.
Have a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, everyone. Much to adjourn. Make it adjourned, thank you.